I'd like to call this planning board meeting to order, August eighth, 2018. Why don't we introduce ourselves, please?
Mike Howey.
John Delisle.
John Fink.
Lisa Enman.
Roger Lucide.
And before we begin this evening's meeting, I'd like to take a moment to ask for a minute Second item of business after the call to orders adoption of the minutes from the meeting of July eleventh, someone have a motion regarding the minutes?
It's removed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion without the minutes for July eleventh, 2018.
Okay, John already made the motion, would you like to second it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
That's all right.
I second it.
He was very short.
Yes.
Any discussion, corrections? All in favor then, please indicate.
You may, of course, vote.
Okay, time out. Lisa, did you vote or not? Yes. Okay.
Next item of business.
Not to put you on the spot. Oh, yes, you did put me on the spot.
Next item of business is a final plan review for a modification to an approved minor subdivision, Plan File forty-four dash seventy-seven, titled Our Way Development-Holt Industrial Park for Dan Quinlan. The proposal is to separate an existing residential building into two buildings and create a new lot in the process, increasing the total number of lots in the subdivision from four to five, which changes the classification to a major subdivision. The proposal would not create any additional residential units. The project is located on one point five six acres at two oh four Bucksport Road, tax map twenty-six, Lot Two, in the urban zone. Proposal would divide the lot into two separate parcels, one zero point eight one acres and the other zero point seven five acres. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Steven Salisbury.
Thank you.
Since the last meeting, we revised the first page of the application, reflected this is now a major subdivision because it's more than four parcels. We provided a copy of the approved and signed original subdivision plan. And we revised the tax map and lot numbers on the plan at Larry Gardner's request. They reflect the map and lot numbers, which will be on a succeeding revision of the tax maps. That's all I have.
All right, questions from the board? No questions? Has this ever happened before?
It may have, I don't recall.
Okay. In that case, what would the board like to do?
Public hearing?
Is this a public hearing? Anyone may comment upon this matter. I ask that before you speak, you be recognized by the chair and then go up to the lectern and state your name for the record. Does anyone wish to speak? No, close the public hearing. Is the board satisfied that all the re- the last meeting, we last time around, we determined that it was a complete application. Are there any aspects of it that we find questionable? No. Excuse me, I closed the public hearing. Was it this matter or the next?
Are we talking about Washington Lofts?
No. Would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plan of a modification to an approved minor subdivision, Plan File forty-four dash seventy-seven, titled Our Way Development-Holt Industrial Park for Dan Quinlan.
Based on the requirements, subdivision arguments, and site plan?
It's correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All on paper, please.
Thank you, I have my lawyers with me tonight.
The next item of business is a final plan review for a major site use development and major subdivision titled Washington Lofts for Jonathan Bates. The proposal is for two twelve-unit, three-story buildings with a total of twenty-four apartments and/or short-term rental units. The project is located at twenty-nine Washington Street on two parcels totaling one point one nine acres, tax map one thirty, Lot Twenty-six and Thirty, in the downtown zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Steve Salisbury, Chip Haskell, and John Bates.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. We've been, at the last minute, we supplied you with some revisions this, on Monday evening, I believe, completing all the changes that the peer reviewer and Chip worked on regarding the stormwater. Tonight, Mr. Bates gave you a couple of letters from two of his tenants regarding the property that he has next door, and comments in general about the neighborhood. I hope you got it. I got this tonight from, from Mike Hangy regarding the fire department's sign-off. They provided a letter dated July twenty-five, and I hope the board got that. I did not provide it.
Yeah.
It may have, I, Mike got messed with all the papers shuffled around.
It may have.
There were no comments on TRT about it, so I just wanted to update you on the paperwork. And, of course, you've got revised plan topics now.
Do you wish to see that letter, if it's all we perceived?
No, I just wanted to make a record of what's, what you have in front of you, hopefully. That's about all I have. Most of the meeting will be probably Chip's arena about, if you've got any questions about the stormwater, which has pretty well been hashed out in the drainage. So let the questions begin. Oh, please excuse me, I forgot my remote control, so I'll just shuffle over here, put the plans up on the screen.
Oh, it's not the game.
It's not a game?
The one that you're hoping to get out to see.
Oh, no, I can see it. I might be peeking down my phone once in a while. It won't get over to Lubbock anyways.
We have been known to go past it, haven't we?
Not for a long time.
I just want to, you know, point it out. Okay, board members, questions?
Oh, I'll start off. I'm kind of going in every direction. Mr. Bates has an apartment complex on, on one A, nine unit, I believe. It's obviously different than this because it's all on one story, it's kind of elongated. What I'm going to is parking. I'm not a hundred percent sure that one point five spots per unit is sufficient. I know that's in the ordinance and it meets the ordinance. Because I noticed in that apartment on one A, now, I mean, it's easy to put two parking places in front of it because that's basically how wide each unit is.
Yep.
So he provides two, two parking places there, plus along the western side of the parking lot, which parallels one A. It's not marked as parking, but cars park there, and I've seen probably as many as, as five. I mean, you could probably fit another ten, twelve, around that. What concerns me is, is these two units, which is more limited in space, it meets the ordinance, but I'm just worried about how, you know, you went on one A, you provided two, actually, there's, you could really say there's three parking places per unit.
But are they all full? I drive by there and notice the couple cars out front, the telephone company truck, but most of the spaces in front of the house are empty.
Right, I've never seen all, all the parking places full.
Okay, obviously.
I'm just wondering, you know, if you foresee any issues with eighteen parking places per building, you know, being over capacity?
Sure, sure, good question. I mean, those are three-bedroom units, and there are a lot of families in there, so they're very.
Oh, the ones on one A?
Yeah, yeah. Three-bedroom, two full bath. It's a different animal than this structure, so that would, you know.
I mean, one thing I worry about, and time will tell, and maybe I'm wrong, but I'm afraid, especially during the winter, and snow on the ground, snow banks, people don't see the parking lines. You know, if there is a problem with the parking, you know, where do the cars park? You know, under the canopy, alongside the building, which I'm sure will upset Mike Hangy?
Yes.
You know, does it get bad enough that, that cars go out on parking Washington Street?
Well, I mean, we're in a downtown zone, too. It's a little bit different of an animal in that regard as well. I mean, a lot of people, you know, one car might be more than sufficient for people that's staying in those facilities. And, you know, when you're in an immediate downtown, you have a walking score like that, that's, you know, what you tend to lean towards doing is limiting the amount of vehicles you may have. And that's where everybody's going in the current economy.
I think the one thing that came up in discussions I had with city staff is, you know, that the one and a half units meets the ordinance, and if, if they end up having more cars than that, it's a developer's problem.
Sure, we don't know how.
But I don't necessarily see it just as a developer's problem.
Sure.
I see it as a city problem, too.
Because they'd be parking in the street?
That, and maybe blocking fire trucks.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, I really cringed when city staff said that. I really did. Because it's a problem on both sides.
The tenants are going to get really mad and move out if there's not enough parking.
Could possibly, yeah.
Because really, there's no street parking opportunities there.
No.
At all, so.
I, I mean, right now, I mean, somebody could go out on the street because Washington Street, there's no prohibition of parking on the street. And I kind of got an idea the neighbors would be upset.
I was going to say, the police would show up very quickly. There's going to be a complaint rolling in.
So, I, I mean, I hope I'm wrong. I hope you're right.
This really be an issue when you're at seventy-five percent occupancy, you know, because there's twenty-four units, eighteen spots. So, it's when you start having all the places run it out, well, it's really going to be a burden on them, how are you going to explain that? But I, I agree with you that it meets the spirit of the ordinance. I mean, it, it's more, it's more of a, an ordinance issue than, than this applicant.
Oh, absolutely, and I've had that discussion with staff, too. I mean, this one here, you perceive having designated parking places, you look for apartment one, apartment two, like you do up on one A, or?
Yeah, that'll probably be how we do it, yeah.
Before we continue, if I could just make a comment. The point, because of the, the ordinance requirements, you don't want to have parking spaces, the board does not have the authority to require more. And as a specific, may be an ordinance problem, but it's beyond our authority to direct anything.
I understand that. I tried to tell as much as I could where in these roadways, where there's guardrails or curbs. I mean, I know there's some snow storage areas, I mean, I did take a ride up back of the one A apartment, and I was kind of surprised by, as you come in on the road, that there's no guardrail.
There's one being installed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because when I saw how steep the bank was, it was like, whoop.
It's very deceiving. It's not really that steep, it's only because the stormwater pond continues down beyond that. It's only like, probably an eleven-foot bank.
Maybe Chip or Steve can explain. As you come in on Washington Street, and like you take a hard right, those lines on the drawn.
Don't touch the screen, they're just mad at you.
The lines that are real close together, I can't tell, are those elevation lines, you know, kind of on that first corner?
So, you're looking for such a curb and guardrail, right? So, coming in on the, on the actual entrance in the apron, the only curb is on this uphill side. There's a short section of curb right here, just to keep people, you know, as they're coming in. Then, the only other section of, section of curb is, we have it all along this section here now. And that is it for curbing. For guardrail, we have a section of guardrail, every, every bold line you see, that's guardrail. That's, that's guardrail there. We have guardrail along this outer edge of the road. And that is it for guardrail.
Yeah, as you first come in from Washington Street, and if you took a right on that curve, where the, yes. Are those, the lines that are real close together, are those elevation lines?
There's a lot of lines in there.
Yeah, I couldn't tell.
But the dash lines are, the dash lines are existing elevations. The solid ones, like right, right that way, and that way, those are proposed grades. And then these ones are utilities, running vertically.
And I know that corner on the right, you're going to be using for snow storage, correct?
All along this, this edge here?
Yes.
Overhead or underground utilities, you're going to put though?
That'll be underground.
Another question I had was, are we, we do a lot, Darrell did a lot on, on lighting standards. And you develop a lighting plan for, for the project. And this is another issue that kind of came up in the preliminary meeting when, I don't recall the gentleman's name, but he lives directly across from the driveway, and commented that all the cars coming out of the driveway, that his headlights would be going right into his house. You know, we, we ensure that light doesn't trespass from the development onto neighboring properties, but, I mean, the light trespass, I mean, they're not exterior lights, but...
You're, you're in the downtown urban core. I mean, that's physically impossible to avoid. To say that you can't have lights coming from a car into another house is impossible to achieve in the downtown urban core. Maybe if you're in a subdivision spread out upon three acres, but in the downtown urban core, I can't see it happening. But I did work with that gentleman, we've come up with a solution.
Well, I was, I mean, it was something that would have to be handled amongst the parties, but I was just kind of hoping that something could be done to.
Sure.
I mean, it's kind of been a unique situation.
Sure.
I mean, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that.
Yeah.
And along the same lines, I mean, when we did the, the site visit, as we walked around the site, I was happy to see you talking with the, the neighbors that didn't walk around the site.
Yeah.
That was really sharing, and I'm, I'm sure that answered a lot of their problems, a lot of their questions.
Sure did, yeah.
And that, I mean, that's what I really liked to say.
You were mostly concerned about that bank of trees out front. I would love to leave those bank of trees, and that's basically what we determined, that those are going to stay. And that was a major concern for some reason, and so I was happy to meet them in that aspect, no problem.
Just one other thing, I think, that I had is, is, I mean, you guys cleared away some of the vegetation from the bank on the left coming out. This was similar to when we dealt with the Roy Leach's subdivision out on the Bucksport Road.
Yeah.
That there was some wording, no, that was a state, well, I mean, obviously, this is not state. But I just wanted, if there's something we can put in the agreement, that we would make sure that the developer would keep that vegetation from impeding the view to the left, basically.
The question I had on that was that, were, were you clearing in the right of way, or were you clearing on your property?
It would probably be in both. It was ragweed, is what it was, so.
But where was it? Was it like, you don't know if it was mostly on?
Probably five or six feet in.
Probably mostly within the town's right of way.
It's, yeah, it's, it looks to be roughly half and half.
So, that's the, the thing is that we can, haven't put one absolutely under, I think it's nine, there is a section there about a visibility triangle, which is not called visibility triangle, but basically is to make sure site distance is maintained, but it's only going to be on his land. He can't put that on our land, we have to take care of ourselves.
Well, didn't, didn't the city, the state, and Roy Leach come to an agreement on that vegetation out on?
Well, with all due respect, if there's ragweed growing up, impeding view, I'll take it out. It's, whether it's a city problem or mine.
So, what we would like you to do is just, it's very simple, it could be a condition of approval, is to create a, we'll call it a visibility triangle at that location, yeah, absolutely, right? It's not an issue?
Not an issue.
No.
Because, I mean, that'd increase the visibility to the left, eventually, yes.
So that would be a condition of approval?
I think that's it.
First, maybe a comment to the documents that we received from the peer review on the waste, the, for the stormwater plan.
Yes.
And then the subsequent rebuttal of what tasks were completed was very helpful, and I thank both parties that, that put that together, because that, I keyed in on that, and it, a lot of questions I had were answered later, I was saying, hey, they've done that, they've changed that, that helped a lot. One, one question I have was on the, the stormwater department for DEP. What's the timeline? How does that?
That is a fourteen-day approval window. So, from the day you submit that application to DEP, they have fourteen days to get back to you. If you haven't heard back, you, it's considered approved, or typically, they get back to you within fourteen days, regardless.
Okay, so as far as approval of this plan, do we need, do we need to make that a condition of, of approval, or?
It's a note on the plan that says that it will be done before, before construction begins.
So, actually, no, because if they don't, if they get disapproved, they're, they're stuck. Whether we issue permits or not, they can't proceed.
Okay. They trumpet.
Yes. And they have already agreed to provide the city their copy of the document.
Oh, that's right, and this is on the plan, okay.
So, the questions. Anyone else?
Yeah, did you come, you're going to officially, you're going to call this an Airbnb, or no, you're just residential?
It's an apartment building.
Short-term lease?
Yeah, six months is the longest we will do.
Six months would be the shortest?
Yeah, yeah.
I do have some questions. And that is regarding, this is regarding stormwater and the peer review report. The summation points. Point number one is on land owned by the applicant. Is it on the property in question, or is it on a budding property?
That's, that's on a budding property, or that's on, it's his property, but it is a budding property.
Within easement.
But we also have a drainage easement, that's, that's correct, to utilize that ditch.
And summation point number two is on land owned by Straw, Strawway?
Correct.
And what is to guarantee that, that access to that is perpetual?
Access to that.
Oh, so the summation point.
Um, we don't necessarily need access to that. It's currently draining there right now, and we're proposing to reduce flow to that. So.
What if Strawway were to do something to that part of their property that would prevent the flow?
To prevent the flow, I mean, that, that catch basin is.
Twenty feet below.
It's twenty feet below our, our, our parking area, so I don't, I would doubt that there's anything that Strawway could do that would really have any impact on our development.
And point number three is also on their property. Is there anything that would, in the future, cause that to change? Does access to it?
I, I would say it would be very unlikely. But again, this is, we're talking, you know, figuring out what, what people may be doing in the future that could impact us, and that would be on them to not dam up our property in doing that. You know, the summation points are really just there to compare pre and post-development, so we have to figure out where the precondition meets the postcondition. So, the point itself isn't, isn't an important point, other than to prove, to show the comparison between pre and post.
Now, the ordinance requires that post-development flows not be increased from pre-development.
That's correct.
And there's a note here that with revised modeling, the only location that shows proposed increase is summation point number one.
That's correct.
And therefore, it doesn't meet the ordinance requirement of smaller flow than.
So there is an exception listed in the ordinance.
Yeah.
That does allow for an increase, provided that the system is not, is proven to be able to handle that, that expected increase.
It actually, if, if I may, Chip, it also provides, if my memory is correct, for no retainment, no, not holding water back if the conveyance structure can also take it.
Correct.
Which they did not have to do control, per se. We did ask them for some control because of the grades, but the conveyance structure can take the increase. In addition to that, why we know it can take it is because there's a decrease of.
Is that exception to the ordinance requirement something that is automatic, or needs a specific approval by the board?
Pretty much automatic.
That's answered my questions. This is a public hearing, as I said before, anyone may comment on this. Does anyone wish to speak?
I have another question.
Oh. Oh, okay, okay.
I'll get it later, I'll get it later.
My name is Rosanna Rich, and I live at Washington Loft. And I watched on YouTube the last planning board meeting, and felt that I should come and wanted to come, and offer a different perspective than some of my neighbors. I have lived at Washington Lofts for sixteen months, and I love it. I love living there, I hope to live there forever. A lot of that has to do with knowing Jonathan Bates, and living in a structure that is sound, gorgeous, I feel like I live, I have the premier living space in Ellsworth. And I'm excited about another space going up like that. I don't have the concerns that some of my neighbors voiced last time, and I thought I should come and respond to that. Dealing with Jonathan Bates and his crew has been a pleasure. They are honest, they are competent, they are respectful, and I'm actually looking forward to having them in the neighborhood again. I lived in Washington Loft when Unit Two was not finished, and it was great having them around. They were incredible in terms of being respectful, that somebody was living right next door. They were incredible in terms of being respectful, that somebody was living right next door, and could hear everything that was going on. A lot closer, I believe, than the other neighbors to the Washington Lux development. So, I wanted to come and tell you that, and am open to any questions that you might ask me about what it's like to live there, and the anticipated expansion.
Thank you, does anyone wish to ask you anything? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Guess please.
Hello, Nicholas Navar, uh, just a general comment for the development, I like the density, um, and as far as parking is concerned, I would like to be in a city that has zero parking requirements, so that's my opinion of that issue. Um, but a concern that I have just with the number of units, which separates it from the lower duplex near it, would just be a pedestrian space to allow people to utilize the driveway with the number of cars that might be potentially using it at the same time. I'm also, um, particularly thinking about like schoolchildren that might be potentially walking to the bus stop, uh, tall snowbanks and young children trying to make it to Washington Street to catch the bus and other users. It definitely comes with benefits with this location, but it also has a few drawbacks with the hill, and if there wasn't a hurdle to access the existing city sidewalk, I'm wondering if it would be more encouraging for more people to access it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none, I shall close the public hearing.
Roger, you have a question?
Okay, uh, yeah, uh, just to enlighten me, what is this snout installation?
Went and down.
Yeah.
It's, um, can I explain it, i- it, it's really just a, just a hood that covers the, the pipe inside the catch basin. Um, and it gets mounted right up against the, the wall of the catch basin, and covers that, that pipe. And what that does is it catches all the floatable material in the stormwater, so, cause that floats above it, and the stormwater that does leave the structure ends up being sent below that snout and in through the pipe, just by the head pressure.
So it's gonna be fifteen inches, but you're gonna use a twelve inch?
I'm sorry.
Okay, it says, uh, he, according to one, uh, one, one thousand four eleven stormwater, uh, it says that we, uh, recommend fifteen inch minimum di- diameter.
Oh.
But you can also have a sm- a twelve inch diameter if you.
Sure, yeah, so that's the, uh, it's not con- not conditional on the snout, really all that's saying is that, um, the storm drain that we are installing in the site, we are going with a twelve inch pipe.
Okay.
And that's simply because of the small volume of water that we're, that we're sending to it.
Okay.
Uh, twelve is more than enough to handle that amount of water, so.
Okay.
What happens to the, um, solid material that has been deflected by the snouts?
Wha- oh, eventually, it's, you know, it ought to be cleaned out, so that, I mean, it's gonna float there until it sinks down to the bottom, or it, it, uh, you know, we have a sump at the bottom too, so, you know, once that stuff does, once, once the, once the rain event calms down, you know, it, it eventually may sink, and when that gets down to the, down to the sump, then it's, it's really not gonna, unlikely to get suspended again, and that's where you pump that up. That's what gets filled up, is that sump area at the bottom, that you get vacuumed out. Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, just one other clarification, I mean, the, the stormwater that was previously going off at like summation point four and three, and then, I'm not so sure about two. I mean, you've added underground drainage in those parking lots now that grabs all that, right?
Correct, yeah, I mean, everything inside the paved area is now being drained across, down toward, down to summation point one.
So, nothing's going off at two, three, and four on the neighboring property?
Not from the paved area, no, there, there's a grass slope there that is draining in that direction still.
Yep.
But for all intents and purposes, that's drastically reduced from pre-development.
I was glad to see you added the, those storm drains.
Yep.
Michelle?
Um, so just to, I just wanted to bring attention to the TRT memo in the note four. Uh, that would be also possibly, um, a condition of approval that, uh, the drainage easement be executed prior to the CO being issued, which I think that's fair, Jonathan?
What was that again, I'm sorry?
The drainage easement be executed, uh, prior to the certificate of occupancy, which it probably should be done prior to that, but.
Sure, that's no issue.
And so that would be a condition of approval that I would ask that the planning board consider. And then the other condition of approval is related to the corner easement that, uh, John Delio has mentioned, and I just want to relate the location and the ordinance that we're talking about, so we're all clear what we're doing, and it's under nine oh seven point one point H. It's called corner easement, and that would be.
Nine oh seven point one point.
Nine oh seven point one point H.
H.
It's called corner easement, and it would be, uh, that that would be on the plan prior to the MYLARs being signed at the next meeting, if that's acceptable to the applicant as well. So, the, um, that's all we have, that's all I have, should I say?
Now, there was the, the matter of, uh, Orange Street.
Excuse me?
I said, there was a matter of Orange Street.
Orange Street, so, uh, Orange Street, there was a letter, an email, uh, opinion from John, uh, excuse me, from Ed Bear, the city council, which basically explains, uh, the situation, which is, was very similar to the Straw Way situation, um, so.
Now, what maps were discovered with Orange Street, Orange Way, because I have never heard of it.
That's the point, these are paper streets.
To exist with that on there?
No, it just, it shows really no, there's no, uh, correlation between seeing it and anything else anywhere, so.
Then, how do we know it existed?
Excuse me?
How do we know it existed if there?
It's a paper street.
So, so there is documentation?
Yes.
Well, yes, but there's no, that's the only incidents, incident or incident, that's the only time we see it, whatever.
There's nothing, um, on record as an easement?
No.
I have not researched the matter, but, uh, Ed Bear says that, um, in closing, I will add that I am unaware of any action previously taken by the city of Ellsworth to preserve incipient rights in these paper streets quotation marks, as authorized by state law, and the likelihood that the city has any legal interest in this strip of land shown as the access drive on the plan for Washington Lux is nil, so.
Then you think we prepared to, um, relinquish, formally relinquish any, uh?
I think we're prepared to do nothing, I think it's just a, that we, that's the same thing, that's actually what we did, is Steve, uh, Mr. Researcher, found a similar issue with Straw Way in twenty ten, we pulled that, um, those things out, and, uh, basically, that's where we at. Nothing was done with Straw Way, nothing would probably be done with, um, Orange Street, although I am not the city, uh, lawyer, and maybe they will do something different, but.
Any further questions?
Yeah, Michelle, uh, can you explain, you were talking about the Ellsworth Workforce Housing Project?
Correct.
To get a credit because of their discharge.
Yeah, so what happened is that portion of the subcatchment.
Yeah.
The pre, uh, catchment area, or I, I think that's what it's called, was going towards Washington Street, and when that stormwater design was done, they sent it, uh, towards the project instead of to the street, so they reduced the amount between pre and post that was going into the system along Washington Street.
So the applicant can take that credit?
So what we're saying is.
You're gonna get less water from up there.
Based on that, we know that that conveyed structure has enough capacity to handle it.
So, what would the board like to do?
No pressure, John.
I started to write down that number, was it nine oh seven?
We lost our motion maker.
Nine oh seven point one point H.
Point H. I'd like to make a motion to accept the final plan review for major use site development and major subdivision titled Washington Lux for Jonathan Bates. Proposal is for two twelve unit three-story buildings with a total of twenty-four apartment and more short-term rental units. The project is located at twenty-nine Washington Street on two parcels totaling one point one nine acres. Tax map, one thirty, lots twenty-six and thirty, in a downtown zone. I find, and we find that it meets section six oh seven, is this part of the motion too?
Yes.
Six oh seven, standards and criteria governing site development plan review, including as applicable, Articles eight, form and standards nine, street design and construction standards ten, stormwater management and construction standards, and eleven parking standards.
It's an allowed use as well, right?
It's an allowed use in the zone. And that it's an allowed use in the zone with, uh, for modification, or condition, uh, from section nine oh seven dash one dash H.
To be on the MYLAR prior to planning board signing?
To be on the MYLAR prior to signing for a corner easement for the purpose of maintaining site distance to the west. Were there another condition?
Yeah.
To create a, to create the visibility triangle and.
No, he just did that, the drainage easement, that's in your, um, if you go to your TRT note four, it says here, um, with the condition that the easement will be executed, the drainage easement.
Have that handy? And with condition of the drainage easement that the.
Less be executed and recorded, third line.
Yeah, again, cross. So, so under number four, drainage easement?
Mm-hmm.
The easement will be executed and recorded prior to the.
Okay, the drainage easement will be executed and recorded at the registry prior to securing the certificate of documents, okay?
May I make another note, could we use the word approve instead of accept?
Yes.
In the motion, I move to approve instead of move to accept.
So, I'll change that to move to approve. Yeah.
Do we have to mention MDEP, fourteen days, no?
No, we have all this on the plan.
Is there a second?
Yes, yeah.
Is there any discussion?
Did you understand all that, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. That's later.
Cause I didn't.
Is there any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please? More extensions or negative though?
Great first motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, do you get to, uh, see the whole thing?
No, we missed twenty minutes of it, I'll forgive you this time.
That's very good.
We have the MYLARs to sign, and then we can close the MYLARs.
MYLARs for our way, we'll bring the MYLARs for this other project for your, another meeting.
Yes, okay. Is there a motion to adjourn as soon as the MYLARs are, uh, signed? I will move that, uh, as soon as the MYLARs are signed, that the, that the meeting is adjourned, is there a second?
Sorry, good.
All in favor, please? Thank you, okay, let's go sign.